Hello and welcome to the March 30th, 2021 special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here.
All right, our first item of business, we have two. The first one falls under ordinances and action items. That is, number one is considering adopting a resolution approving the purchase of property at the address of 10455 Torre Avenue, Cupertino with the assessors parcel number 369-40-009. Madam City Manager, if you would care to introduce this item.
Yes, certainly. This was the purchase that we embarked on last month with a 20-day due diligence period, 30-day close. This action is to appropriate the dollars for the purchase and allow me to complete the purchase as intended.
Okay, very good. Anyone else from staff care to provide a presentation or any other information or update? We do have our staff report as part of the agenda as well as draft resolution that's available to people. Okay, I'm not seeing any takers on the unmuting or the nods of heads. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? And I do see an attendee with a hand raised. Before I go to the attendee, are there any members of council that have questions of staff with regard to item number one? Okay, seeing no head nods or raises of the hand, I'll move over to our public speaker. And we have a hand raised from Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer. I'd like to remind the members of the public that once Jennifer begins speaking, you don't need to have your hand raised in order to speak on this item. Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Jennifer Griffin. I wholeheartedly approve of the purchase of this property. Very familiar with that area, and I think this is a very, very smart use of city money. To remodel the city hall would be $65 million, I believe. Five and a half million, if that's what this property at Torre would be, is a drop in the bucket to what it would cost to do a full-out remodel or rebuild of the city hall. And I know the staff has put up with a lot of stuff for a long period of time, so now you guys have room to spread out. So I think that this is an excellent use of city money. My good, whoever found this property, you have my commendations, and it's an excellent use of public, of city resources. Thank you.
Jennifer, thank you very much. And we don't have any other hands raised, and so I will bring this back to council. Prior to any further discussion, would anyone care to bring a motion on this item?
Yeah, I'd make a motion on that. I move that we adopt resolution number 21023 approving the purchase of the property at 10455 Torre Avenue, assessors parcel number 36940009 from Rudd, Cheratab, Steffen, UniTrust in the amount of $4,450,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and related steps to complete the acquisition. And two, we approve the increased budget appropriation of $4,450,000 in the general fund, non-departmental program for the purchase of this property.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Would someone like to second Councilmember Willie's motion?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to draw council's attention to an amended staff report that was submitted as a desk item. And essentially, the recommended action is just item two, since the council has already approved the acquisition of the property. And so, Councilmember Willie, would you mind if I read the recommended action and?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that is adopt the draft resolution approving an increased budget appropriation of $4,450,000 in the general fund, non-departmental program for the purchase of the property. And that is the limits of the action before you tonight.
Great, yes.
Okay, very good. And we have a motion on the table. Would anyone care to second the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, great. Councilmember Wei seconds. And let's have any discussion? Are there any discussion points that council wishes to share at this point?
I'll just make one comment. I really appreciated the resident that spoke and, you know, pointed out that the city staff has been, you know, getting more and more confined in the existing building. And the proposed replacement of a totally new city hall at $65 to $70 million for our community seems, you know, just more than we should be attempting. And so this, I think, offers a really good addition to city hall. Just a short ways from city hall and right across the street from the library. So just want to be sure the residents that are watching realize why we're embarking on this.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And anyone else care to make some comments? I see Vice Mayor Chow, you have your microphone unmuted. Did you want to go next?
No.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Wei?
Well, I'll just, I'll just make a couple of comments. You know, I want to, I want to thank Councilmember Willie for John for bringing this to my attention. He had indicated that he saw the sign in front of the building itself on the corner of Torre and Pacifica. And he had also noticed that there were several people milling about in front of the building itself, looking quite interested in it. And so it did seem like a rather unique opportunity. It is a situation where, you know, we are in the middle of a very different time, hopefully nearing the end of it. But it does seem almost generational in the sense that this was a building made in 1970s. It's been occupied by a group of attorneys for a certain amount of time. And there does seem to be, you know, the appetite to sell and possibly turn over the usage. If you look at the architecture of it, it's actually kind of similar to city hall. You know, when you're kind of looking up and down the Torre Avenue corridor. I like how it bookends our civic center, including the the library field space. And it just seems like there are a lot of good possibilities. And in terms of acquiring a property and land in a civic center, where you're looking at, as the as the speaker from the public rightly pointed out, there was a plan in place to possibly spend up to $70 million on a revamp of city hall. Of course, you know, the $4.45 million that you would spend here, that we would spend here is not necessarily the only amount. There is also the fact that city hall itself needs to be seismically retrofitted. But of course, getting that upgraded and getting, you know, more of a modern workspace there as well as this new space will be significantly less than the $70 million possibly putting forward in a new city hall. So I think this is a really sound fiscal decision. I look forward, you know, even in the decades to come, 20, 30 years, to look at the fact that we do have, you know, a really fairly extensive civic center space in this area. And it really keeps a lot of our options open on long term. So this has my wholehearted support, and I really appreciate all the work that's been done by by staff to put this in front of us in a fairly brief amount of time.
So without further ado, I would like to call for a vote for the motion that's on the table. And so, Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct that roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
I do have a question. Vice Chair, Liang Chow, your hand is raised. Was that, did you want to say something? Mayor Paul?
I don't.
No, it's an accident.
Okay, all right. So we, the votes, was I just called?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Our next and last item, which will be a fairly extensive one, is a study session on our work plan for the upcoming year. This is to review council goals and prioritize our potential fiscal year, 2021 to 2022 city work program items. And before staff takes it away with regard to the presentation, I do want to preface this by saying that this has been a fairly extensive process to get to the point that we are right now. And I think administratively, we're at a really good point because right now we've managed to synchronize the activities of the commissions insofar as getting feedback and input as to what their desired work program items are for the upcoming year. Prior to this, you know, essentially all of the commissions and our audit committee were not really in lockstep with regard to how they considered their year's work programs. Some went on calendar year, some went a little bit closer to fiscal year. But now we're, we're in good synchrony through a lot of work from a subcommittee comprised of Vice Mayor Chow and myself a couple of years ago when city manager Feng just started on, as well as staffer Katie Nomura. We had what seemed like countless numbers of, you know, sessions going over what our processes were. So it's been very gratifying over the course of the ensuing year and a half to see this process culminate. And I realize that this is a very unusual year. There was a bit of a tendency to say, hey, look, you know, we're in the middle of COVID year. Let's go ahead and try to move our work plan from the current fiscal year to the next fiscal year. But I think this is a real opportunity with the sort of common understanding that we're not going to be able to get everything we could possibly get in a normal year done this year. And therefore, there is probably of necessity going to be a good chunk of what we didn't get done this fiscal year, which does have, you know, approximately three months left, you know, 25% of the year left. You know, over by the time we get to June 30th. But I really appreciate the willingness of staff to sit down with us and, and go over what we've done and where we're going so far, as well as the various priorities that have been expressed and collected by our staff liaisons and our city manager over the course of the last couple of months, even going back to the end of last calendar year, to try to get a sense of what the desired work plan items are, not just from city council, but also from our mechanisms for gathering community input in our commissions and audit committee. So with that preface, you know, I think we're at a wonderful point. We've gotten a good amount of information and detail as to what we've done, what we're prospectively looking at, and what our commissions and audit committee are looking at going forward. And so without further ado, I'll bring this over to our city manager to take us through the summary of what we have in front of us and what we've been asked to do by staff in terms of kind of pre-preparation and prioritization of our own individual preferences on council prior to this meeting. So Deb, take it away.
Thank you, Darcy, Mr. Mayor. I did put a little short slide deck together just to, you know, pin us to the process that we've been working on since 2020. And unfortunately, 2020 was when COVID hit and when we were starting our brand-new strategic planning process. I do want to pay, I do want to pay my appreciation to both council and the commissions and others that helped put this together, but also to them being mindful of the fact that we are in COVID and being understanding that, you know, many of the projects that we have listed here are here because they were, we were unable to complete them in this kind of environment, mostly in the 2020, 2021 work program items. So essentially, if you look at our reminder of the strategic planning process, we are kind of in that first blue box, but we're really into determining the work program items that fit underneath the council's goals, which we've seen a couple of times. So you'll see this also at the end of our rating process that we go through. And then what will happen is we will bring the whole thing back to council in a subsequent meeting, kind of racked and organized, and be able to tell you exactly what we can accomplish and what we cannot. So before you, you have several attachments. Oh, here are the council goals, which, again, you've taken a couple of looks at. It's, they are very enduring goals for the next, you know, three to five years. So I'll leave it there so you can take a look at them some more, but nothing has changed from the beginning of the year. In your attachments, the attachment to focus on, of course, is attachment A. And it basically has everything in it that has, from the 1920 work program to the 2021 work program that are either incomplete, well, that are incomplete for various reasons. Those are items, items one and two. The third item in that attachment are items suggested by council members. And then, of course, all the items proposed by the commissions and a few additional items. Once we start with the attachment A, we're going to be asking council to rank or rate the work program items by goal, I would say is probably the best way to go, since that's the way the attachment A is organized. And to change it right now might create a little bit of chaos. I'll try and keep it as orderly as possible. But I also wanted to provide you, Mr. Mayor, with an opportunity to either go to the public for any public comment and then bring it back to council for any discussion prior to the discussion of ratings for each item.
Right, and then just going back to the prior slide.
Yep.
Just for purposes of clarity, you're asking us to rate five items as high priority or up to five items, we're putting a five. And then the next is probably done in an effort to save some space in the bullet points and slide. But the next part of it probably should have a period after five and go rate up to 27 items as medium priority by putting a three next to the item.
Correct.
So, yeah, so those are two separate asks.
Actually, actually, I think it was the elimination of a bullet accidentally.
Right, right. So it's just like a return after.
The pair of return, right.
Yeah. So, 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 so basically, you've got 59 items, right? And you're asking us to say these five are high priority for each of us, 27 medium, and then 27 low?
Correct.
And, okay.
Now, if there, if there are any that, you know, you just don't feel are no, they're no longer a priority, you can put a zero next to it or nothing at all. And we are here, city staff and I are here, to answer any questions on any particular items as we get started. So it's up to you whether you'd like to go to public comment first and then bring it back to discuss or have any kind of discussion with council prior to getting started on the prioritization.
Yeah, you know, I'd be happy to open it up to process-oriented questions to council. Given the fact that you seem to be at the end of your slideshow, is that right? Are there other items there to go over, Deb?
No, we would jump right into the attachment A essentially.
Okay, great. So, so, so here's the thing, right? I mean, staff did send this independently, and there wasn't, you know, kind of intercommunication. And so we, we've had this kind of awareness of the ranking system for, you know, you know, since it was sent over by Katie a couple of days ago. So I was looking at it and going, you know, I could put the five, you know, I get that. It's important to put prioritization on a relatively limited number because, you know, the, the fact is, if you have a high priority, it probably will take a fair amount of bandwidth and resources from, from our city and staff. Where I was getting a little bit of a question was, yes, I can see the sense in a certain number of sort of middle priority items, 27. That's fair. It's about half of what's left. What I, what I found kind of in my own, you know, process was looking at these items that were kind of so-called couched as low priority. I, I wouldn't necessarily say that they're low priority. But I did find myself wondering whether it wouldn't necessarily recruit a lot of bandwidth from council, if at all, especially if some of these items are items that were requested by our commissions. And so is there perhaps another classification? Because from what you were describing, you were saying either put a one there or put nothing. And if you put a zero there, it's basically coming off. But if you put nothing, it's sort of coming off too. And so that gave me a little bit of clarity because I had actually put nothing where all the kind of, you know, remaining items would have had a one. Because I just wanted to see if perhaps it would be possible, you know, if we were examining it, not necessarily to consider it a low priority, but to consider it more along the lines of, you know, questioning whether we could perhaps put this into a commission work plan or reference it to a commission if, in fact, it wouldn't take up, you know, bandwidth of the council. You know, so, so is that kind of within the contemplation of possibilities within this ranking system? That, you know, there, there's, you know, because we have some, some 11 to 13 commissions in the audit committee, right? We have a fair amount of bandwidth from the appointees in terms of being able to work on these items. So that's my question. I mean, are priority one items truly low priority in the sense that they, you know, if they collectively get low prioritization, that they're going to fall off? Or is there a possibility of, you know, commissions taking those on?
Well, so let me answer it this way. So think of it this way. Anything that you would rate a one, it's not necessarily a low priority overall, but a low priority compared to the other items that you are rating. And then the other thing to consider is your limitation is staff time. There are not enough hours overall to, to accomplish all of it. So let's say, for example, we come up with some items that are ranked as one. Maybe you could typify those. Those get done as time allows or something like that.
I see. I see. Well, that's, that's fair. You know, and, you know, going to the issue of time, I mean, you know, just, just for the public benefit, I mean, I, I think it, you know, is good to, you know, kind of communicate that. You know, you and I had spoken, and I thought maybe it would be a good exercise to go through each of these items and, and put a numerical time, you know, estimate on each one and thereby kind of assign to each council member, you know, a, a time increment, like maybe on a scale of zero to 100, where you have 100 points and just assigning, you know, a certain amount to, you know, the various projects. And then based upon that, trying to figure out where the time bandwidth was. But, you know, I respect and understand that it is very difficult, you know, to make a time estimate on a lot of these. And, you know, as we go through a collective process of prioritization, perhaps it would make sense in a future iteration to, you know, kind of do it in a more quantitative fashion. But I, I mean, I think we're kind of at the beginning of a relatively novel process. And so, you know, let's, let's go ahead and try it, try it this way to see, you know, how the effects work out. But at the end of the day, you know, do you think it would be fair to say that we're open to, you know, configurations in the future depending upon how well our process works out this year?
Absolutely. And, you know, always try to adjust the process so it's better and better. I, I believe in continuous improvement. But there's also this, we will attempt to try to quantify because when I bring this back to council, what I have to look at is how by goal I would disintegrate each project and put them into departments to see what the workload will be in each department. And that is a complexity that starts to prevent us from having a very clear quantitative way doing it at the front end of this. So I promise that at some point we'll be able to do that with some accuracy, but, you know, there's always outliers. For example, I don't know that we could have ever estimated how long and how much time was put into Bird Safe Dark Sky ordinance, quite a bit of time. So that's just one example of, you know, we could estimate a number of hours and we'll always be wrong. So, so bear with us, and we will come up with a way in the future perhaps to be able to do that.
All right, fair enough. You know, I appreciate the input. I do see a couple of hands raised from council. We have councilmember Moore followed by councilmember Wei.
Thank you. So, you know, we have a general plan, and it's our blueprint for the city. And I, I'm concerned that you have council goals which were adopted February 18th, 2020. And you have two new council members who were not involved in the, the adoption of these goals. And my concern is that, having gone through the general plan, that there's a little bit of, I don't know, I want to say, I would prefer that you actually went back to the vision in the general plan, the vision for Cupertino. Cupertino aspires to be a balanced community with quiet and attractive residential neighborhoods, exemplary parks and schools, accessible open space areas, hillsides and creeks, and a vibrant mixed-use heart of the city. Cupertino will be safe, friendly, healthy, connected, walkable, bikeable, and inclusive for all residents and workers with ample places and opportunities for people to interact, recreate, innovate, and collaborate. And then our general plan goes on to 12 guiding principles. And their headings, develop cohesive neighborhoods, improve public health and safety, improve connectivity, enhance mobility, ensure a balanced community, support vibrant and mixed-use businesses, ensure attractive community design, embrace diversity, support education, preserve the environment, ensure fiscal self-reliance, and ensure a responsive government. These 12 items, I really like how they are the headings of them. And I don't feel that the council goals are as reflective of these 12 items as I would like them to be. For instance, I don't see support education in here. Perhaps it is, you could say it is under some heading some way, but I'm, but I'm not seeing it. So for me, going back to square one, under council goals, I would say I would want to have put into this list that we have to, we're implementing the general plan here. So we have to have these 12 guiding principles in here. And those are based off of a vision. So the community's already done all of this, this outreach and work on that. I would like to have those, those goals put into this list before, you know, and I don't have a problem with the ranking system that you're doing. I just want to make sure that we're ranking based on what we agreed as a community in our general plan to be what our priorities are. Okay.
Yeah, and many of those things that you mentioned, those 12 points in particular in the general plan, are reflected underneath a more summary goal. So think of the goals as kind of a higher, higher level, higher level, more of a guiding level that goes into, that, that goes into more detail than the general plan. So a lot of those items that you're talking about would fit underneath quality of life. And therefore, you see a lot of those items having to deal with those topics there underneath that goal, even though they are not specifically, not specifically pulled out. It would become a little unwieldy if the council goals end up being like, you know, 17 or 20 goals. The idea behind setting goals in any year for the next however many years is to be able to, in a very concise way, talk about your, your relatively short-term goals, a five, say a five-year period, to be able to say what, what are we trying to achieve in that five-year period? And underneath, what are we going to, what, what projects are we going to do or focus on in those five years to move our goals forward? And then theoretically, at some point, some of those goals roll off or change or adjust, and you come up with new, a new goal or new goals that go forward.
I think, I do think that, you know, some of the problems that I have with this, aside from not having any input on it, is the, the issues of equity and balance and having accountable reasoning. I think it's, I would like to have that also, you know, into what our goals are. So ideally, we would have had an update because it says at the bottom, while these are intended as multi-year goals, they were reviewed annually by city council. I don't feel that I had any input on this annual review, and I don't recall having it. So ideally, I think we would have had prior to this meeting, or it's going to happen right now, a review of the, of the goals prior to digging into how we're going to prioritize each item.
Sure, we can certainly dig it now. We have provided the goals to council a couple of times now, and there's been no indication to me nor, I mean, we, maybe because I didn't prompt it, but been no discussion of changing them or adjusting them, but certainly we can take the time to do that now.
I would appreciate that. And I imagine councilmember Wei would like to have some input on, on what our goals are in her hand raised too.
Please.
Great. With that, we'll have councilmember Wei with clarifying questions prior to opening it to the public commentary.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, and thank you, Katie. I want to add on to it that, you know, this is my first time. I do, I'm very happy I can see that it's publicly engaged. I, I do, um, I'm very happy I can see that it's public engagement and transparency and then has sustainability and fiscal strategy, you know, housing, transportation, so I get the categories. And um, so I just wanna clarify, um, is this what we're doing? So we are prioritizing for just next year, this year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, right? Uh, this is-
This one year, yes. There was a plan, there was a plan last year um that we, we were going to try and address our work program in two years and then have kind of a um, a companion budget process that resulted in a two-year budget. But it, we just, it just was overcome by, by COVID. But that's, we're back to a one year and we're just fine.
Okay, because there's a lot of good things that Mayor Paul says, you know, the ones doesn't mean that they're not important. And, but we can put them on the back burner and it means next year we view them or add more.
Yep.
So, okay, so that's what we're doing. And I can see if we prioritize five or six items, that's really important we have to do. Staff is gonna work in a lot of time on it. Also commissioners probably gonna work on the same uh project, right? So kind of be on the same pace to doing this uh that we, what we prioritize today.
Yes, yes. And the, and the point of getting a commission input, um, the mayor uh alluded to this earlier. Um, for the months of December through February, we were, staff was going to, to the ca- uh commissions on their leading schedules to talk about um, uh, future, you know, future work program items for the coming um work program year. And so we've incorporated all of those into Attachment A.
Right, I'm seeing that, yeah.
Right. And so, and from there, the idea here is that um, whether it's commissions reviewing something, whether it's staff work, whether it's council receiving certain items on an agenda, um, all of it is related to the city's work program. So we're all bought into the same work program and all the work that commissions are doing are lined up with the city's work program.
Right, because we need staff and commissioner and council to work together.
On the same things, correct, correct.
And my, uh, last question is, we do have our capital improvement program and I see some overlapping. Is, is it, oh, is it overlapping? If we're overlapping, doesn't mean, I'm, I'm a little confused on the-
So, yeah, so ideally, ideally, and um council has heard me say this before. Ideally, what you would have is um items on the, the um CIP, um, which would, we'll, we'll discuss them pretty, pretty much in depth, just like the work program. On May fourth, I believe, we're planning a study session to receive input um, council. Uh, in your work program, um, you can have items that are on CIP, but they'll be in both places. Um, people find comfort in seeing the items on the work program so they can just check in on status. And what we've done this year, and it's relatively new, um, is we have two dashboards. We have the work program dashboard and we have the CIP dashboard. So if you're interested and you want some progress, just, you know, once every Tuesday or you wanna check it out, both dashboards are available so that you can see and the public can see what's happening with projects.
Okay, so, but my, my last question is, we have the CIP, then we have this uh work prioritization list.
Correct.
Have had too much for the staff to do or?
It's a lot, it's a lot. So we will come back to you after this particular process. Staff will come back and feed back the work program results to the council as a result of this rating uh process. And then we'll go into CIP, we'll do a similar process. We won't maybe rate them, but we'll discuss all the projects and look at the priorities. And then that will all dovetail in, once, if those are approved by council, those plus their costs are then all dovetailed into the budget process.
Right, so we have no, okay, so we have another process to really-
Correct.
Things. Okay, thank you. So I just wanna know the process. Thanks, Deb.
Mm-hmm.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Wei. Our next hand is raised by Vice Mayor Chow. And Vice Mayor Chow was uh followed a moment ago by uh Councilmember Willie, whose hand is raised again. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. Um, so how are we going to rank the items now we are having the virtual meeting?
Um, you were, you have the material, um, and you were supposed to take a look at Attachment A and place a five against five work program items that you find extremely important. Now, the thinking behind that is there are five council members and if you picked five discrete items each, that's from a staff perspective, twenty-five items. So we, and there may be some overlapping, we just don't know. And then you would give a three to twenty-seven items, meaning a medium priority, and then a one, again, a low priority for later, um, to twenty-seven more items. There are fifty, fifty some odd items on this, fifty-nine items on this list.
Yeah, and so my question is, it's easy for us to give the top five, but how about the twenty-seven? How are we going to do that through a virtual meeting?
Uh, well-
Or do I do that after the meeting?
Uh, well, you might wanna talk about that in public. Um, you know, the, the um attachments were available last week and we were hoping you would have looked at it and taken a look at each item.
But what I mean is, I have this physical copy, right?
Yes.
Will weigh each, five of us mark twenty-seven medium, twenty-seven low. How will that be done through a virtual meeting?
Oh, Katie has her hand raised.
Uh, I was actually hoping that we'd have a, an Excel uh version of this. I have got my PDF, I tried converting it over, having little problems. I would love to have an extra column on the left uh that I can put those rank numbers. And then when you get our files back, you, it'll be super easy for you. Um, but right now I don't have the Excel version and uh-
Oh, I thought we sent the Excel version over.
I, I-
We had emailed it on Thursday, I can resend it to you.
Look, look at your email.
But in, but in addition, I think that uh we'll be actually going through each item and asking for everyone's verbal rankings. I'll be marking it down just so that it can be all in the public of what the ratings were from each council member.
Right. Yeah, so the email was from Katie on Thursday, uh, the twenty-fifth, uh, time was eight twenty-four PM.
So we are, we should mark it on the Excel or we don't have to, we'll just do it verbally here?
You can do it either way, Katie can capture your rankings and/or you can send them in.
Okay. Another question is, uh, the, the very first item, for example, is an item that's actually was proposed in the beginning of two thousand nineteen, delayed twenty, and then now it will be delayed again. So this is an item, so if I want this item to be higher priority, I have to use one of five votes that I have?
Correct. We, because what we did is this Attachment A shows if it's blank to the left-hand side where it says priority, then you would rate it.
So this is an item that, um, why is this item keep getting uh lower priority? Because this is an item that the council kept requesting and it kept getting lower priority. I don't think the COVID has anything to do with this.
Uh, it kind of does.
Be scheduled to as council agenda so we can discuss what new commission, committee we should have. And it's never been scheduled.
Well, I think because-
In two and a half years now.
I think, I think due to COVID, what we've done is we're preparing a report so that council can see the report first on the comparative between different cities and the commissions you were asking for, plus the commissions you currently have. Um, and we can certainly check on the readiness of that. But yes, you would rank this at some level compared to the other items.
Yeah, let, let me, let me take this back because I, I think it's useful for us to kind of go over a process and-
Yep.
The fact that um, you know, I, I'm tasked with running the meeting. I think, I think what we do after we clarify our questions here, um, and then we go to the public for their commentary and feedback, what I'd like to do is to go through the entirety of this list of fifty-nine items and have a conversation about where respective priorities are. Um, I, I have filled this out and so I would be happy to kind of um, you, you know, create a bit of a framework. I, I, I think our ensuing discussion is about uh trying to get a back and forth with regard to our priorities. I, I, I think it's healthy to have a discussion of what our respective priorities are because we just don't outside of the context of, of, of the meeting. And so um, a, a session with regard to, you know, who prioritizes what high and, and perhaps even some of the reasons, uh, with, you know, conciseness and brevity in mind, of course, uh, without sacrificing the substance of, of one's viewpoint, um, could very well help inform other people's uh perspectives on, on their prioritization. So um, you know, feel uh comfort in the idea that we're gonna come back and go through the list um, and, and be able to use this opportunity to uh get a sense of where our respective priorities are. So um, a, a, another thing, um, because the way that we're structured, uh, there is the ability for us to raise uh agenda items along the course of the year. Everything that we've raised in addition to what the uh various commissions want, those are reflected in what you see in front of you in these fifty-nine items. And so you can think of this as a cohesive check-in point as well. And I think that prioritization on a scale of five or three or one, five being the highest priority, um, i- i- is a good um uh standard to use because we can, uh, as, as, as Deb and I, at least for the remainder of this calendar year up to the, the first Tuesday in December, um, are, are looking at priorit- prioritization and availability for agendas. We can get a sense of, okay, so there is, you know, basically a weighted um, you know, prioritization. You know, if we're putting a five or a three or a one uh from our members of council. What we do know along the way is that if an item is brought up at the end of a council meeting by two people, um, that there is an appetite, right, to have that show up on an agenda in the future. What we, what we really haven't been able to do uh along the way, at least from what I've seen, is, is to have a check-in point where we're assigning uh prioritization levels and we can have a consolidated sense of, for example, where do um, where, where does the item of trying to consider new commissions stand vis-à-vis some other item? Um, and i- i- if we're trying to think about, you know, aligning these items on agendas during available space, that is really helpful as a guide going forward. Um, so, so just to give you comfort on, on that aspect, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, you um are still in your-
One more question, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So it's good that we are prioritizing, but because I, for example, last year, the lobby ordinance suddenly interjected when, when that's actually taking resources, I guess, away from the new commission because it's the same, the same staff resource.
Mm-hmm.
We should have um looked at the priority at that time. My question is regarding, there are some items that says will be incorporated as part of operations. So does that mean if that's prioritized, it will not come back to the council? It will just be implemented by the staff? Then um for, for another item, for example, roadmap project, it will pu- publish process for chart for public facing online application. That's not marked as incorporated as part of operation. So wouldn't that also be that? So, and my question is, do I need, still need to vote on the ones that will be incorporated into the staff operation since it won't come back to the council agenda or not?
Yes, so that you can tell us that it's a priority that you want us to work on. Yes.
And shouldn't roadmap project be part of the um, the staff operation item too?
Sure, if you vote on it. We just, maybe we just forgot to mark it.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
And the ro- the roadmap item as a, as a reminder was taking some of these city processes like um asking, requesting a public records act or, like the gateway process so that people can see where a certain project is in the process.
Yeah, I think you are already creating that along the way, right?
We, we tried, we piloted some of it. Yep, yep.
Okay, great. Uh, so we have uh council member Willie hasn't had a chance to ask uh questions yet. And he has his hand up, Councilmember Willie.
Okay, so um, I think this is very well laid out. I mean, when we're talking close to sixty, pretty gargantuan task for us to then go through. And uh, so I think the way it's laid out, where we all uh take our top five and then, yeah, a lot of other ones are pretty, still pretty important, so they get three. So, the first comment is though, is that times have changed. We, we've been through something nobody ever expected with COVID and a lot of things are not as far along as we had hoped. And so um, times have changed, our priorities have changed, you know, we have a homeless, a, a shortage of housing, we have homeless. And so with those concepts, I think it's pretty important that on some of these items, especially our top five each, the definition, the past definition will likely be asked to be slightly changed. And, and so at least that's what I'm going to, to do on the ones of interest to me to make sure they're hopefully captured. Now, if the rest of the council doesn't agree with the, the possible uh redefinition for like homeless, helping the homeless, then, okay, no problem, but at least I put the idea forward. Now, by doing that and going through the sixty nine, the sixty items, I think for the most part, the task gets significantly simplified if we kind of, you know, be reserved in our comments. Take the ones that are the most important to us and let's get those things, if possible, the best defined. And the ones that are ones or possibly zeros, I think for the most part, just walking through them, there may be a resident that has a, uh, an important point about something and they could in fact chime in. But now, when they chime in is the question. I would like us to walk through the list as quick as we could, potential adjustments. We won't necessarily make the changes until after we finish. But by putting those possible um definition corrections, then the residents can weigh in and say, hey, I like that or I don't like that. And then we can go ahead and make that final uh cleanup and then we go off and rank them. And I would see that as being uh an efficient way for tonight that if we expect the residents to weigh in before we talk about these things, it may not even be what they're thinking. And so I would really like to, I, providing the residents agree, you know, save their input and we buzz through and make sure we have proper definition on all these, then get their input. And then we take it all, uh, maybe we adjust the definitions and then we go off and do our ranking. Five fives, twenty-seven threes, and twenty-seven ones or zeros. And so that's my suggestion for tonight, but I'll go along with whatever the uh, the council decides.
Right, you, you know, Councilmember Willie, I appreciate that. You, you know, let me, let me take that as a process-oriented question. Um, and so uh, I, I would like to answer it by saying that I, I think, I think that's a great thought. Um, we do have fifty-nine items. Um, and, and so my, my thinking on this is that perhaps it makes more sense for each of us to, to share, if we have them at this point, our initial five, uh, up to five high priority items. Um, if that would be acceptable, I, I, I think it's just a lot easier to focus on, you, you know, potentially up to twenty-five items. Um, and there's probably gonna be some overlap than it is to focus on how five people think about fifty-nine different items. And, and so if you're amenable to that, I would be happy to, you know, take a, an initial poll, if you will, uh, of our council to see where each of us sits on our high priority items uh before we bring it to public comment. But just in the interest also of efficiency and time, I, I, I just, I, I don't see a very uh time economical way to go through the entire list, even if we're trying to go quickly. Um, so uh, I see council member Moore uh does have her hand up. Did you have a, a question or a follow-up comment on that?
I, I don't think that we should be prioritizing our top five until we've got a full understanding and gone through. Even if it's fast, you go through the list and you know what each item is, um, because some of them uh, you know, need some clarification, which I would like to have before, before I agree to them. Um, the other issue, I just went through the spreadsheet, I finally counted up to the fifty-nine, they are, they are not numbered. I would prefer, if, if anybody can pull this together quickly, I would have preferred that the list um was uh a, a, a complete spreadsheet, one to fifty-nine, with the items actually numbered so that we can have a conversation which says, you know, item twenty-two, and then we can quickly get to that item and, and, and discuss it. Um, the way it is right now, it is a spreadsheet broken into um-
Gold.
Uh, you've got public engagement, sustainability, you've got five pages. Um, I, if it was all in one line, I can, I can work with it a lot more easily. I've used it on, I, I pulled it in on notability, um, is, is my issue. So now I've got to now move my information over into this spreadsheet, which is- So, now I've got to now move my information over into this spreadsheet, which is broken up into parts. So, ideally, I would want the first column added to each page and the number for each, each one included, just for bookkeeping sake and conversation sake. But also, going back to my first comment, I'm not, I'm not ready to share my, my top five without going through what those items actually are.
So, Councilmember Moore, are you saying that in, in order to share your top five, we would need to go through collectively the entirety of the spreadsheet? Or are you saying something else? Because I'm trying to glean whether what you're saying means that you're not prepared to provide prioritization in this meeting or whether there's something that we can be doing in this meeting that could get you to the point where you can provide that prioritization, because-
I think we should have a discussion on what the, what each, what each item is. Now, we had to do this, you know, in the planning commission and we also needed to go through the entire general plan, all the goals and strategies went, took months to go through, okay? And it, what you get to is a point where you look at a page and you just ask, you know, are there any questions or comments on this? You know, you've got one through twenty on this page. If nobody has a question or comment, then you just move on to the next one. That's the same with this here. We're all, we're all, you know, pretty quick thinkers. We can go through a page, if we have a question to staff, I don't understand what this one means, let us know. Or, or I'd like a little more information about, you know, what net zero means. You know, I want to understand what that definition is before I prioritize it. Sounds good, don't know what it is. Traffic garden, do we have a space? It's an interesting idea, that kind of thing.
Okay, so, it sounds like what you're asking for is a, a point-by-point summary of each of the items prior to us going forward. I, you know, I, I think given the fact that this has been noticed and we have had the items, I'm operating on an assumption that council has gone over the particular items that are listed in the spreadsheet. I'd be open to having another round of questions to clarify what a particular project is about. But I have to ask that people come in prepared with regard to the materials that have already been released. And so, if there is-
We had, actually had a, excuse me, mayor, we had a different procedure this week where we did not have a, an agenda meeting with staff prior to this. So, there was no, no meeting where we could go item by item and have these questions answered. I do see that we have everyone from staff available to answer questions and I will assume that they are present in order to do just that.
So, what we could do, Mr. Mayor, make a, make a suggestion is I could say, for example, on page one of Attachment A, does, do any council members have any questions on the details of any of those projects? And we'll just go page by, maybe we can do that in kind of a expedited fashion and then get to the end that way a little more quickly.
Right, I mean, I, I will note that you do have over fifty-nine lines if you include the notations on the items that have been completed or almost completed. With regard to the items almost completed, can we assume that you're on the, on the verge of-
You would not have to rank those.
And you don't need further guidance from us as to-
Correct.
Whether to go through it.
That is, that is correct. There's two, there's two categories of items that do not need ratings. One is the almost complete and complete.
Right, and so, those, those basically serve for the purposes of this contemplated exercise, you know, if we take it up, for notifying us and the public as to items that have already been done or are about to be completed. So, okay, if, if that's amenable to the council, then I would be happy to ask you to go through essentially, you know, point-by-point and ask if there are questions for particular items as we go through these five tabs. And again, you know, just for purposes of people aren't necessarily following along, that's public engagement, sustainability, transportation, housing and quality of life for people that don't have the spreadsheet in front of them. And so, let's go by a show of hands. Is that something that council would like to have? And hopefully, we can, you know, keep it relatively time-efficient in terms of getting through.
I have a process question.
Yes, Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, so, I think we have new council members here who probably are not familiar with items that were on last year's agenda. And, and then there are two, two different categories that I think we need to separate out. One is required, for example, the housing element, that has to be done, whether it be rated number one or not. So, is that one of the items here, then that should be excluded from the top five? Because then I would be thinking, I don't want to rate that to waste my five. But that's a required item, I wouldn't want not to do it, right? So, that should be a, a separate category, a required.
We can certainly take note of that, yes.
Anything that we have to update state law to, to satisfy state requirement, that should be a separate category. The second one is, we have, as four out of my top five are items that were on last, this year's agenda, but not complete. However, my understanding is staff has spent significant amount of time on these items already. So, that means if we don't, if we de-prioritize these items, we're throwing away all the time that staff has done on these items.
We tried to capture the, Vice Mayor, we tried, we tried to capture-
I think it should be a separate category also.
They are, so if we spent significant amount of time, you would see a notation next to, in the column that says, item almost completed, meaning there's no reason to waste all the hours we've already spent on trying to complete that item.
For example, the number one, consider new commission and committee. I thought that the staff has spent quite a bit of time, it was scheduled to be in April.
Yeah.
And that, and then it's not, and then, so for example, the object is standard ones. I thought we, the staff already spent a lot of time, I don't see that as partially almost complete. And then the development accountability, I think that was the high priority item also for the council and that's also not listed as the almost complete or, or an indication that it's partially complete.
Yeah, I don't think we have any time spent on that one just yet. We do have, I know, some time spent on the objective standards as discussed by those that can be done, quote, in Phase A that are already complete and then those that will be done with the housing element, those that will be done with the design standards update. So, they're all kind of bucketed as to when they go. So, you're right, there has been, in that case, time spent and completed a portion of it, but it's not complete because of these other buckets that they go into.
But they are not marked as such.
Well, why don't we discuss each one?
New council members would not know that these are actually partially completed items of ours and actually high priority item from last year. And now I have to, I feel like I have to waste my five of my, four out of my five votes to vote on something that should have been completed last year and almost complete that's, they should be voted separately, in a separate category.
Once we separate the categories, we're going to be back to fifty-nine items though. And so, the, the idea of this distribution is to really get from you what your priorities are, even though-
No, I mean, we should separate the cat, the items that are partially complete, already invested staff time on, and then if among those, by default, we are continuing, but if there is really significant desire to not discontinue any of the items, they should be decided separately. Because if we put everything together, we might accidentally de-prioritize something we actually already spent staff time on.
So, just as a, as a note, we, we did our best to, to the degree that you're speaking to, we did our best to separate out items that, you know, we've spent a lot of time on and they're almost complete and those are the almost complete items. There are other items that you are referencing that a lot of work has been put into them, but there is also a lot of work left to go. And so, we want to make sure, we do want those to be rated because we want to see how they fall on the rating list amongst all the other items. But that said, again, once the prioritization happens, we'll bring this back as a recommended or a draft work program and council will also have an opportunity to say, hey, I didn't mean for this item to drop all the way down here. Did, did my fellow council members also mean for that? And there can be an opportunity to address any of those nuances that you don't feel are appropriate.
I think that's a waste of time. My proposal right now is that's separate on, into three categories. So, one is required items that we don't even need to prioritize. Second is incomplete items from last year that likely the staff has spent some time, yeah, it's not almost complete, but we have spent significant amount of time on that. Those should be rated separately. And then, because then knowing that if we drop any item, it's not by accident. And then we rent any of these new items.
I think, I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to get a little bit of clarity as to the, the process and i- i- in our kind of collective consciousness and whether we're going to be able to accommodate each of the stated preferences here. So, we've got a concern with regard to making sure that there is a cohesive understanding of each of the items on the fifty-nine item list from Councilmember Moore. From Vice Mayor Chow, we have a preference to have an additional category to indicate items that have had a considerable amount of work done. My, my, my concern with particularly the second one from Vice Mayor Chow is that it does tend to change the terms of the process as laid out and notice to the public. I'm not averse to injecting another session here, but what I would like to do is try to get a sense of where we're going forward procedurally. Because if we go through this exercise of going point-by-point and then we also along the way, you know, ask staff to identify what's already had a significant amount of work done, what we end up doing, I think, is pushing this in a very time-intensive manner to a point where perhaps we're not going to be hearing from our members of the public in a timely fashion this evening. So, you know, frankly, my inclination at this point is to hear from the members of the public because we do seem to have some strong and definitive opinions as to what makes sense procedurally. I've already stated the fact that, you know, I had my own kind of sense of where process-wise we should be heading. But, you know, I'm happy to accommodate staff's preference. This is an early, you know, iteration of the process. What I will say is that I don't think everyone is going to get a hundred percent of everything that they want, either substantively or with regard to what they prefer as an idealized procedure. And so, at this point, you know, given the layering that we're looking at and the noticing issue, I, I'm really more inclined frankly to go to our members of the public because, and, and if we feel, if we deem it necessary to reopen that public hearing, perfectly fine, but I, I would like to give that respect to the people that are here from the public to have their input provided in a relatively timely manner. So, if there are no other questions clarifying the materials here, barring of course, the omnibus question of like, can you give us, you know, more details on every single item? I'm going to go to the members of the public now and then bring it back for further discussion at, at that point. I see six members of the public with their hands raised. Councilmember Moore, you do have your hand raised. Do you have an additional question at this point to clarify? Or is it a comment with regard to your, your process?
It is a question.
Requests.
It is a question. So, and it goes back to, you know, when I look at this, this, the staff report, recommended action, review council goals, while these are intended as multi-year goals, they're reviewed annually by city council. So, I, I made comments about these goals. So, for me, when I look at our general plan, so I wanted to have the twelve, the twelve guiding principles of our general plan implemented. When I look at it and I see ensure fiscal self-reliance and support vibrant and mixed-use businesses, I would want to know exactly where those key into these items and I'm not seeing something, and perhaps, you know, it's just a simple oversight, is there something which talks about an economic development plan? How we're going to be assisting small businesses? I saw a little bit on, there was a tiny sliver of something for helping small businesses with education for, for starting up, but I'm not seeing exactly what I'm, what I'm hoping for, which is something more like, are we going to do a new economic development plan? Are we going to codify the Economic Development Committee? Something like that, and so, is, is that in here?
Well, let's, if we could answer that question by going page by page and you asking clarifying questions so that we can get them kind of popped out of the page first. We'll do that.
Yeah, I, I mean, process-wise, I'm going to go to the members of the public at this point and we can bring it back and go point-by-point through the items.
Can, can I just, I, I think I have something that might help and that is, you know, overall, we have X amount of city staff resource and if for tonight's effort, we were to say, the ones that are almost done are considered so close to finishing that they get covered by staff time. Then we have our priority, our, our ones that are going to get fives and then we have the ones that are going to get three. So, if we were then to ask the city manager, can you with some, some sense of confidence say that all the almost-dones are going to get taken care of? All your fives are going to get taken care of? And all your threes? Now, that leaves twenty-seven that are going to be, you know, ones or something. But if we had that confidence, I would think we as a community, we as a city are really, you know, hitting the ball out of the ballpark with that much achievement by the end of twelve months. Now, if the city manager were to say, gee whiz, we don't have enough city staff for all the fives, the almost-dones and the threes, then we're really going to be picking out of those twenty-seven threes so that city staff does have the amount of work that matches up to their headcount. And with that being said, I would think that if, with that thinking, we should be able to go through this, we all are going to focus on the ones of importance to us and on the ones that are not really, you know, moisture content of soil, we're just going to, you know, buzz right over those and, and there's really no discussion. So, I, I just want to toss that out that I, I don't see it needs to be, you know, too involved. So, I'll leave it at that if it helps.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Willie. I, I do see that we have more members of our public here and so, I'll, I'll transition over to comments from members of the public. I, I will say and repeat the, 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 the process for taking in public commentary. As soon as we have the first member of the public complete, we will close off the list of, of hands raised as we can see them. And so, with regard to the first five hands I can see, those are Seema Linskog, Jennifer Shirin, Jennifer Griffin, Jen Heh and Prabir Mohanti. And so, you'll each have up to three minutes to speak and welcome Seema.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Respected mayor and council members, it's very, very nice to be talking to all of you again and just wanted to put in a good word for Carmen Bridge. We are very strong supporters of Carmen Bridge. We think it will improve the quality of life of thousands of residents in multiple neighborhoods in that area and unify neighborhoods again that were cut apart in the sixties by the new Stevens Creek Boulevard when that was put in and they cut through that hill. It will allow up to five hundred kids to walk or bike to school, which in turn will also significantly reduce car congestion at Montavista Kennedy and Stevens Creek School. I know Councilmember Kitty Moore mentioned equity and education. This will help meet the city's education and equity goals by providing more transportation and recreational opportunities to seniors, students and families while income levels. Sunnyview Manor actually is one of our, one of the groups that is endorsing the bridge because it improves walking opportunities for our seniors in our city. because it improves uh walking opportunities for our seniors in our city. Um and um it will connect two pieces of the Stevens Creek Trail together uh which uh will extend the trail significantly all the way down to Linda Vista Park when you combine it with the new Linda Vista Trail. So a lot of different benefits for the city as a whole for a fairly modest uh price point. So strongly encourage you to please uh put that on your priority list um and uh look forward to um seeing it built at some point. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much, Seema. We now have nineteen people with their hands raised. Um and so our next speaker is Jennifer Sheeran. Uh welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh good evening, council members and Mayor Paul. Mayor Paul, I particularly wanna say that I appreciate your comments at the AAPI rally this past weekend. Um I'll be quick, as I know you have a lot of speakers tonight. I urge you tonight to support adding the Carmen Bridge to the upcoming CIP. It's a tier one project from our twenty eighteen pedestrian plan. It'll allow hundreds of students to be able to get to school by bike or walking because they won't have to try to cross Stevens Creek Boulevard with all the traffic, especially in the mile distance that is between the two stoplights. It'll be great for seniors walking from Sunnyview Retirement Community, as Seema mentioned. This is the exact kind of project that will help many family seniors and students. Thank you for consideration tonight for this project. Thanks.
But thank you, Jennifer. I I appreciate your consideration of the time efficiency. Um I I just wanna um reach out to our members of the public. If you have similar kind of thoughts, please feel free to uh reference your your prior public speaker's comments. Um for my part, I'm taking notes on who's supporting what. Um so thank you very much. Our next speakers uh in order are Jennifer Griffin, Jen Ha, and Prabir Mohanty. Welcome, Jennifer. Uh sorry, Jennifer, you'll have to unmute yourself again.
Yes, sorry, we I forgot we did this at the hotel in February, right before COVID. And it was a good meeting. Anyway, I'm glad you all, I know it takes a lot of time. Um I'm just gonna start out and say, we heard on the news today that Little Target is closing. Target is closing two small targets, one in San Francisco and one in Cupertino. And I'm very, very concerned about that because we all have used the Little Target a lot during the COVID time. It's nice to have um there's Big Target, but it's, boy, it has been a convenience to be able to go in the Little Target and get whatever you need, especially during the COVID uh shutdown. And I really hope that we can keep the Little Target there. If it does have to go, I hope that they put another retail in there, like some sort of a convenience store. Because when Main Street was uh being planned twelve years ago, there was supposed to be some sort of a grocery store in there. So I really, really hope that we can keep the Little Target. Um I can't tell you how many times I've been in there in the last year, and we're really glad to have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Jen Ha. Welcome. And Jen, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay, yeah, okay, good, thank you. Yeah, so uh good evening, everyone. Um so uh I'm Jen and a parent at Kennedy Middle School. So uh tonight, I'm I'm here uh on behalf of my family and also for uh for walk by Cupertino. So both my boys have been walking biking to schools in the third grade. And then even during pandemic, they actually bike and walk around the neighborhoods with their friends, wearing masks. So my husband also bike regularly to uh to, you know, somewhere to stay fit. And my I have two um uh old parents, eighty two year old, and they also use the park a lot. They walk to park. So I just wanna thank you for all you do for our city and to keep it a very nice space for family. And then Carmen Bridge is this project is going to uh improve the neighborhood connectivity. And then so I wanna just uh thank you all for for working on that. Because actually, I I remember the back to meeting two thousand nineteen, you already approved the feasibility study for Carmen Bridge project. There's a lot of parents and my friends, actually many of my friends, and then their children also show up in the meeting, talk about how important this project is. So you already invest a lot of time, energy and funds in this project since two thousand sixteen. So there are a long list of reasons I I wanna quote couple is about uh the project already included in uh the pedestrians plan and the bike plan. And then it's going to create a very good, much better, safer route for uh five hundred students and for um fi- uh three schools over there in the Montevista Kennedy and Stevens Creek uh yeah, Stevens Creek Elementary. And it's going to help so much for the, you know, air quality. And then also, uh the Kennedy PTA and Montevista PTS, they already will officially endorse this Carmen Bridge project. And then we are go also, I I gave a presentation to uh PTOs and then I'm going to give couple to. So on this part, and on behalf of Walk By Cupertino. So I we are outreach to many community members and leader leaders and to explain the project. And so it's going to be uh really beneficial for our community. And over two hundred parents, students and residents already signed a petition in support. So um I just um want to know, there are a lot of support from our community for Carmen Bridge. So I just encourage you to uh consider to include this project in uh twenty one to twenty two uh CIP plan and then resume the project because school is also reopening in April. So it's a perfect timing to put this project on the table and then put in including your plan for next year. Thank you so much for all your good work.
Uh great, thank you, Jen. Our next speaker is Prabir Mohanty. Welcome, Prabir.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um uh thank you, Honorable Paul and um City Council for the opportunity to uh speak at the council. I'd like to address three items, um actually two of them. Page six, um Vision Zero that we came up with um in TIC and also Bike and Ped Commission came up with it with the same plan. So we are talking about uh implementation of uh near misses uh uh with uh camera AI and so on to keep track of the near misses between pedestrians and vehicles, between vehicles and vehicles and vehicles and uh bikers and between bike um pedestrians and bicyclists, I meant bicyclists. Um so some of what we are proposing is a digitization of grass maps of the city, um implementation of near miss, which I just described, and also to enhance adaptive traffic signaling, which is in pilot phase and is approved project for twenty 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 one uh to address the near miss and crosses uh to improve public safety. Um San Jose has already done something like this, and it has vastly improved their safety. And both TIC Commission and Bike and Ped Commission voluntarily vote for it. And um so the other one is um uh you know, the enhanced public safety and um the Safety Commission um and TIC Commission both uh have recommended this, which is we have a lot of uh catalytic converters, lot of breaking into cars, almost just about every neighborhood. Um lot of um, you know, there are heat and runs and there are um um you know, nuisances like breaking wind sails and uh burglary is just about everywhere. So we have spoken to a lot of these uh um top tier companies, whether it's Google, Microsoft, Amazon, um and so on, um Facebook and also the um dedicated pure play companies which address safety in different places like uh Itachi Vantara, which has video cameras and they have uh systems that can um uh be put in place. Um the thing I would like to and one other thing I would like to point out that the commissioners in all these commissions are very eager to support the staff. They are specialists, they have deep experience and they have uh um they uh you know, they have uh they are willing to volunteer and spend the time. They don't want to be decision makers, but they are willing to do all the groundwork and provide um those inputs to the staff so that staff can bring a lot of more of these online.
Fifteen seconds.
Second, yeah, there is a public-private partnership that San Jose is following and Makenji, the consulting firm, has recommended where we should pursue uh partnerships with some of these highly capitalized uh you know, uh companies which are in the bleeding edge of technology. Many of them have uh discussed about making a major investments in Cupertino. And Makenji has recommended any of these types of deployments needs uh millions of dollars.
All right, thank you very much, Prabir. Our next speakers are Leanna Crabtree, Nader Vedat, and Jean Bedord. Welcome, Leanna.
Good evening, um Mayor Paul and council members and staff. Um thank you for this work program. I uh had the privilege to serve as a library commissioner for several years and and seeing the evolution of how the communication back and forth between council and the community and the commissions has evolved and improved has has really been um really gratifying to see just it's it's much it's a much more coherent process than when I first joined. Um I am a former library commissioner, and I wanted to provide a little bit of context to one of your um attachments tonight. It's uh a a attachment D. And for the library commission, you have an item that says there are no proposals. I just wanna make sure it's understood. Um the library commission considered this item January sixth, and at that time, we had three um three commissioners who were terms were coming to the end. Um and we were, it was our understanding, and I I think this is still true, that we were asked to add any new items, um not to the work plan for the commission, but rather specifically to the work program for the council. And so I wanna make sure that um the council understands and that the community understands that the library commission has work plan items for itself, but not items that it felt were necessary to elevate to the level of council's consideration. Um because the the commission had really been working on things related to access to the library, transportation to and from the library, and of course, the program room, which is so exciting, um that finally, you know, broke ground this month. Um so thank you so much. I hope that's clear, that the li- the library commission is busy and active um and moving forward, but didn't offer new items to the council for this time. I also wanna give support to the Carmen Street Bridge and uh retail at Main Street and also definitely tracking those near misses. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Leanna, for the information. Uh we are uh at Nader Vedat. Welcome, Nader. And Nader, you'll need to uh unmute yourself. I I apologize, I mispronounced your name. Oh, there you go. Welcome.
I'm here tonight to ask you that please put affordable and very low and extremely low income housing for people who have intellectual and developmental disabilities back on the city's twenty twenty one, twenty two work plan. We realize that COVID has increased immensely cities' challenges, but we also feel that this is a very important topic. One of the approximately hundred adult Cupertino residents who have intellectual and developmental disabilities, uh only about a dozen of them have affordable housing in Cupertino. My daughter is one of those lucky residents. She loves the greater independence, and we like this to be the same for all of the adults in this community. Now, we understand that Cupertino Rotary is working with city staff to see if it would be possible to create some units on Mary Avenue. Please keep this project on your twenty one, twenty two work plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nader. And our next speaker is Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jean Bedord, and first of all, I would like to thank Mayor Darcy Paul for staying with the process that was advertised to the public and not getting sidetracked into other discussions on the prioritization process. Um I think it's important for council to realize that this is an iterative process. This is only the first cut. And so let's please not drag it on until a wee hours of the morning going over uh each of these items. Now, I'm actually here to speak with regard to the work item entitled Senior Strategy. It's one of the orange ones. And I want to commend council for considering this item. Certainly, our city needs to address our aging population. One in three households has a resident sixty years and older. Has written, however, this line item lacks focus and is poorly defined. It's not clear what could be achieved in the next one to two years for this work item. Here's the description. Quote, "Address the needs of seniors in collaboration with the city council and commission. Needs to address include technology resources, housing, food supply, transportation, and mental and physical health and well-being." Phew, all of that in a one-year work plan? As president of the Cupertino Senior Center Advisory Council and a member of the Age Friendly Cupertino Task Force, the most immediate need our seniors have is access to technology. Not only physical access, but also assistance in addressing technology illiteracy so our seniors can access the wealth of resources available to them. Our Parks and Recreation does an outstanding job of providing virtual exercise programs. The Cupertino Library Foundation is providing a series of programs focused on seniors. But these require Zoom, and many of our seniors struggle with the technology. Telemedicine is a great advance. That requires a device, software, and internet access. During the shutdown at the senior center, the staff has made phone calls to seniors who can only reach by phone. Social isolation is a major issue. As you consider this work plan, either revise the senior strategy to reflect work that can provide concrete results in the upcoming year
in seconds.
or remove the item instead of wasting city resources on ill-defined project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speakers are Byron Rovetno, Lisa Warren, and Patricia Chen. Welcome, Byron.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Uh thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um I am for Carmen Bridge, and I will not belabor the point, but I do wanna make a couple points that haven't been made. Um at the November twenty nineteen meeting, which was the last activity on this project, um council members cited safety concerns as a major reason to vote for this project. And those safety concerns have not been ameliorated. So I would like to see the project go forward. And secondly, to address Councilman Willie's comment tonight about the bandwidth of the staff, um the uh next phase of this is the engineering design. And um it would be a subcontract, so it doesn't sound to me like letting a subcontract would be overly onerous. And then work could be done in parallel so that when the existing bike projects wind down um in the spring of next year, then you could fund the next portion of this and get it built. So um I thank you for your time and listen.
Thank you, Byron, and thank you for your succinctness, um as well as your iterative ability there. Um we have Lisa Warren next. Welcome, Lisa.
Hello, I'm here. So um I'd like to thank the mayor for summarizing in the beginning the process as he saw it and pointing out that things have definitely improved in the past couple of years um with communication with residents. And I hope that is something that continues for a long time to come. And I I appreciate Councilmember Moore's comments regarding the five headings for goals versus the twelve goals in the general plan. I think that's really important to consider. Um i- i- if you're doing a pro con list and you only have five items where there's where there's twelve that should not be ignored, the outcome is may not be what it should be. And I understand that these twelve are supposed to be lumped into the five, but I think you all and anybody with any decision-making in this process keeps those twelve in mind. So that's the end of that comment. I I wanna urge you all to, when you're going through this process, remember that we need a balanced city. I think that's first and foremost, and I think it can be a bigger umbrella than. Anyway, it's just really important. Some things are taking care of themselves doing that, and others need a lot of help. And I'm hoping that you five who are there now will help with that. I'm I'm I have a question that I know I won't get an answer to, but I've heard for years we don't have enough staff time. I'm just wondering, with Cupertino's size in both population and project area, whether we're at... Are we lower-staffed than most cities of like cities? That's just a question I know won't get answered, but it does make me wonder. Because this has been a continuing problem. And, okay, let's see. There's a lot of letters and a lot of comments about Carmen Bridge, which the enthusiasm is great, the idea, the goal is good. I would like to have that same enthusiasm follow anything in the future that is needed to support a similar issue. Because we have no guarantee that schools are not going to close. We will have children crossing busy streets, Bolinger.
In seconds.
Quickly. And, you know, maybe conversations need to start at what can we do there? Because we already have a huge issue with safety on Bolinger. And so just don't forget, the goals now need to be carried through for what's likely to happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker was Patricia Chen, but I don't see the name still here. And so, at this point, I'm going to go on to our next three speakers, which are Orin Mahoney, Peter Chu, and Janet Van Zoren. Welcome, Orin.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. Whoops. I think I'm unmuted now. Am I?
Yes, you are.
Perfect. Yeah, I'd like to comment tonight about a project attorney been touched on, which is the ELI housing for the development disabled. Oh, great. So, it was about two years ago at then-mayor Steven Scharf's State of the Union, where he challenged the audience about this particular process. He said, "We need to find a way to do this." What is this? You know, ELI housing for the developmentally disabled. And he had an idea about how to do that, consider underutilized city land for the housing, work with nonprofits to get funding for the housing, and have them reserved for those with developmental disabilities. Well, I was in the audience, and I thought at the time, I thought that Cupertino Rotary could take a lead in doing this. So let's look at the elements of the process. Underutilized city land for ELI housing. We have a proposal to take parts of Mary Avenue that are just used, were used next to the sound wall, and actually to for a four-lane road that was going to be for a heavily trafficked area when there was a vehicular bridge across 280. That's underutilized city land that we can use for this. Work with nonprofits, obviously Cupertino Rotary is one, but we're not doing this alone. The two other key nonprofits we're working with are Charities Housing, who has a strong track record with the city of Cupertino. They did the Piranda Housing Project and are actively involved in this project as well. And then you'll probably hear from somebody from Housing Choices, who are the advocate organization for this group, but they're not just advocating, they're a planning partner, so that we make sure that when this thing gets developed, it really meets the needs. It's not close to what the needs are, it really meets the needs of these people. So we were making good progress in this area. We had a preliminary plan for about 40 units, which is very close to the 45 that were shown in Stevens' thing. We discovered that the city actually owns some land, and we thought Caltrans owned, and things were moving along. So we had some preliminary plans, we were putting our partnerships together, and then, as we all know, COVID happened. That slowed things down, but now, really now is the time to get this back on track. The need is there, you're going to hear more about the need being there. Rotary's ready, Charities Housing is ready, I think the council is ready, so it's time to make this happen, and I hope it stays and moves up in the priorities on your work plan. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks very much, Orin. Our next speaker is Peter Chu. Welcome, Peter.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and I see that we have a very exciting set of CIP plans, and I am so happy as a resident here just to hear about sustainability, quality of life, and balance. That's kind of the vision that I think all residents here crave for. Thank you for that. And I'm also, you know, to reassure that Planning Commission, Technology Commission, Communication Commission have included 5G governance initiatives into the agenda. We would like to see the city take this proactive role in informing, educating the residents of the ongoing 5G plan. Yes, there's some guidelines on our city website, but not all of us residents know these are even in existence until we get a permit, you know, a request from the carrier. So I urge you to adopt these measures, to inform and measure sort of what the residents... Because if you talk to the residents who actually are getting these permits, you will hear that they are very concerned about their quality of life. I get these emails every week, somehow people find out about that I'm at my interest, and they sound distressful. They sound upset. And I hope that, you know, and in the week we did, one weekend, March 13th to March 15th, we did a just short calling around email. We got 150 people signing up to say, "Please have the city do something with this." So I am, I feel very reassured that the Planning Commissions and TICC have heard us, and I look to the council to really put this forward, put the priority in, set the budget in place. Because we would like you to really listen to us and represent the interest to develop, to really care for the quality of life. What I see here, you know, is a very good start, and I know that some of the council members are behind this as well. I would love to see that in the priority list. So let me, I'll keep it brief today. I like to see that, please have the work plan be allocated for 5G, but more so, perhaps consider putting on a fast track. Because if you read the email, you hear the phone calls. It's emotional, it's upsetting to many, many residents, so please address that. So once again, thank you very much for your consideration, and thank you for all the work. I love all the items on the 15 line items. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Peter. Our next speaker is Janet Van Zoren. Welcome, Janet. And Janet, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Oh, it's not working.
It's working. We can hear you now. Okay.
Now can you hear me?
Now we can hear you again, yes.
Okay. As many of you know, I've been working for many years trying to create affordable housing for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And when we founded Housing Choices 20 years ago, my dream was that we would also be able to develop a project here in Cupertino for people who have those needs. I think the time has come, it's beginning to happen. I feel the community is behind us. I feel that there's a lot of momentum happening right now with our collaboration with the Rotary and with Charities Housing. And I recognize that there are a lot of problems due to the COVID and the challenges that that has brought forth to the city, but we're beginning to make progress, where the project is gaining momentum, and I really feel that this is not the time to remove it from the work plan. So please include on the city work plan, the Mary Avenue project. It will improve the quality of life of our community members, who because of their intellectual and developmental disabilities are severely economically deprived. It will give them independence, it will just change their life immensely. And so I urge you to jump up on the bandwagon and help us to keep this project moving. And just one last tiny thing, while not so tiny, I agree with Jean Bedord about the need for seniors to have better access to the use of technology. This has been an incredible challenge for me this past year, and I know for many other seniors as well. And I still haven't quite figured out how you unmute yourself when you're on this platform. So I'm holding down the spacebar if that helps anybody else coming along after me. It seems to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. And our next speaker is Ilango Ganga, and that, Ilango is followed by Larry Dean, who is followed by Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Ilango.
Yes, this is Ilango Ganga. Can you please hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I am Ilango Ganga, I am a member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, but today I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I am here to speak in support of the Vision Zero, which is listed in one of the recommended program work plan items. This has been recommended by both the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission as well as the Technology Commission. Vision Zero strategy is a comprehensive set of policy to eliminate, or rather, you know, achieve zero traffic fatalities and severe injuries, while increasing the safety of our streets, side, you know, sidewalks, as well as the bikeways. So, the traditional approach assumes that there is some amount of accidents or injuries are inevitable, whereas the Vision Zero approach assumes that, you know, severe injuries and fatalities are preventable, and then comes up with comprehensive policies in order to address that. So, this includes safety for all modes of transportation, including, you know, the bicycling, pedestrian, as well as the motor, which are using our Cupertino infrastructure, for example. In the last five years, several of our, you know, neighboring cities, including San Jose, Sunnyvale, and Mountain View, have adopted this Vision Zero policy. And, you know, Sunnyvale, for example, San Jose has already implemented an action plan, and they are already doing pilots and quick build projects in order to improve the safety of their infrastructure. So, it's, you know, excellent data-driven strategy, and some of this, you know, data-driven approach includes identifying risk factors, you know, coming up with mitigation measures, and then continuous evaluation of risky locations prior, before, and after. Like, using technology, San Jose has been doing pilots on technology as well, in order to identify near misses. I think the previous speaker, Prabir Mohanty, already spoke about that, I won't go into detail, but San Jose is already, you know, implementing the pilot, one of the pilots, three locations they are doing this, pilots, in order to identify and improve the safety of the intersection, and also identify what has happened before and after, for example. And so I would definitely like to, you know, thank the DPC Commission, as well as the TIC Commission, and also the city staff and management for recommending this into the proposed, you know, 2122 city work program item. And I definitely request the city council to adopt this work item for, and then, you know, make our city also compliant to Vision Zero, joining the rest of the Bay Area city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ilago. Our next speaker is Larry Dean. Welcome, Larry.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor Paul. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
There we go. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. I will be brief tonight, but at first, I'd like to start by congratulating you and the city team for putting together such a wonderful list of bike-related proposals here for your consideration. Three years ago, we would have never seen this. Five years ago, for sure. So, the city has really come a long, long way in terms of its focus and visibility to make biking and walking safe and easier in town. And thank you so much for your collective efforts in this way, because I know it's not easy. First picture here, this is Stevens Creek Boulevard up by, at the top of the hill going towards Foothill Boulevard. 11,000 cars a day on Stevens Creek Boulevard, 16,000 cars a day on Foothill. Major congestion issues. Next slide, please. Connectivity. Here's a sample rendition of the Carmen Bridge that connects the two sides of Carmen Road. As you all probably know, Carmen Road, 60 years ago, used to go right across that space, and it was a main arterial connecting those two neighborhoods. So in line with the long-term aims of the plan, connectivity is and should be a big deal to our community. Right now, there are members of the neighborhoods who've lived in their houses for 50 years, and they don't go to the other side, just because it's almost impossible to do that. Next slide, please. And to highlight the safety and help to our students, you can see with the red arrows how, on the top left, we have about, we have about 300 to 400 kids that need to get from Kennedy Montavista from their neighborhood, just around Stevens Creek School, not the collateral neighborhoods. In north from the scenic neighborhoods, there's about 130 kids that are largely driven to school each day. So the third element of our support for this, and we ask for your support for this, to move the project along, is student safety and relieving the congestion around schools and accordingly with our streets. So thank you very much, and we're here to help you out.
Thank you, Larry. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Thank you for this time to speak. My name is Connie Cunningham, I'm on the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking for myself only. Housing for All Incomes and Abilities is required to create a sustainable city and to prevent homelessness. Our current housing element of the general plan clearly states the importance of having varied housing types. I'm focusing on one specific proposed work item under the housing goal. Extremely Low Income Housing for Developmentally Disabled Individuals on City-Owned Property Along Mary Avenue. That's on page eight of the draft there. First, I want to thank the city council for the past two city work programs that included this work item. Former Mayor Scharf had the foresight to include a plan for extremely low-income, developmentally disabled individuals in the FY 2019-2020 city work plan. Then in the following FY 2020-21, the council wisely agreed to continue that city work item so that work could proceed. I urge this council to again rate this work plan item at the highest level of five and retain the ELI for developmentally disabled individuals in order to continue the project until it is complete. I note that this year's wording added "along Mary Avenue" for the first time, which indicates that progress is being made. It would be a significant blow to the many, many, many Cupertino families and individuals who need this housing if it were not retained on this year's work plan. Thank you so much for your leadership on this, and I hope it stays on this year. Thank you for... My time's up. Yeah.
Thank you, Connie. Our last three speakers, with apologies to the people with their hands raised, and a reiteration of our process, by the time the first speaker on an item is done speaking, you'll need to have your hands raised in order to be included in the speaker list. Our last three speakers are Peggy Griffin, Josh Seelow, and Rejul Pandit. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Paul, council members and staff. I've got a slide. Thank you, Kirsten. I want to first note that in the future, each item should be numbered. It's easier for reference. And I want to make a comment. In reading it, it seemed to me like someone wanted to play with IoT sensors. They were brought up in traffic, noise, pollution, and public safety. First, public engagement and transparency. I think regularly scheduled meetings with two council members where you can talk to them, you know, back and forth would be nice on a regular basis. Give them Zoom support so they don't have to get somebody they know to handle it, and provide support for public noticing via emails, next door, the scene. The scene could just say, "These are the regular meetings," you know, don't have to say who's going to be there. And it could be rotated, so you could have mixture of council people. Transparency. Periodic updates on planning and city staff projects that are kind of in the background, I felt like the residents and the city council got blindsided on the Outback site. There wasn't anything, although Rotary and West Valley were working on it, other people knew about it, but it seems like a periodic update of things in it, it can be behind the scenes if you can. The ELI on Mary Avenue, it's been in the works. I've heard today, for the first time, several people speak about it, but nothing in city council meetings. So a periodic update would be nice. Transportation. A very... A very cheaper way to go is add bike racks everywhere. Parks, post office, senior center, libraries, businesses, and have a sponsor a bike rack. List the ones you need and let people pay for them. And put it in the transportation budget, not the parks and rec budget. Sustainability and physical strategy. City Hall, investigate the alternatives. City streetlights, reduce the light output. Next page, please. Quality of life. Please, fast-track. Revisiting the 5G. Make a monordinance. Lawrence Mitty and Rancho Rinconada are equality thing, issues. You've got the purchase of Lawrence Mitty, finish it. So we have something, and it doesn't sit idle. Retail, preserve it. We're losing our retail, and there's got to be a way to say this mixed-use stuff is gobbling up our retail. And R1, as density increases, the balcony regulations and the tree list for screening need to be updated to be appropriate for this amount of space. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our next speaker is Josh Seelow. Welcome, Josh.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. It's so good to be with you this evening. The first thing I want to say is I want to share my gratitude to all of you for standing against Asian hate. I'm as devastated as you all are at the rash of violence against Asian Americans in the Pacific Island community. It gives me great pride seeing our mayor speak at the rally on Saturday, and to see our council members there as well, standing in solidarity against Asian hate. This is the kind of community I think we all can be proud of, and I'm grateful for all of you taking your time to take a firm and real stand against this virus that exists in our community. So thank you all so very much. I also want to stand tonight with the voices who've raised their support for the ELI housing for developmentally disabled adults on Mary Avenue. We all know this is not a new project. I can't speak as passionately as Janet and Nader did as parents and advocates, and I can't go through all the details. You don't need me to go through them. Orin gave you all the details of the evolution of the project. What I can say is, and I'm really grateful to Councilmember Moore for beginning with the values of the general plan. It is consistent with a balanced community. It is consistent with an inclusive community. It is consistent with the community that embraces diversity. For all these reasons, I hope we continue to support the development of a project on Mary Avenue for extremely low-income developmentally disabled adults. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Josh. Our next and final speaker is Rajul Pandit. Welcome, Rajul.
Hello. Hi. Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak again. I, first of all, I wanted to say, after listening to all the citizens speak, give out such impassioned speeches on so many different issues, I feel very proud to be a citizen living in Cupertino. I really do. And, and for you to be hearing all, all, all our complaints and all our issues, and, and to react and hopefully act appropriately, I, I am, I feel very emboldened that this is, this is good. What is happening is good, and I'm living in the correct, in the right city. Having said that, I do want to, well, one thing, previous speakers spoke about quality of life. It seems that is the theme of the evening today. And, you know, they have spoken about, you know, the older population, the developmentally challenged population in our city, and told, and I totally back that. I'm a physician, and I'm completely, very much acutely aware of that. Well, my, my issue today is I want to bring, to highlight the quality of life of our children. And, and I know that the city cares a lot about the children. We have some of the best schools that, that are in the Bay Area. I want to, I want to point out that the 5G rollout is very acutely tied to the quality of our children and their life here in Cupertino. And if, if there's anybody who, who thinks or feels otherwise, then all I would say is they are being naive about it. So my, my very passionate plea to you today is to please make 5G cell tower rollout a top priority and to fast-track it. Because I'm afraid that just because it is a new issue, it is a new item, it may fall through the cracks, and I'm really urging the council members to not let that happen. Please make it the highest-level 5 priority today when you discuss it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rajul. Greatly appreciated. That ends our public commentary. We are at 8:26. We've been going for about two hours now, and so before we bring him back to council, let us take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:32. Thank you.